And before we launch into the agenda, I thought maybe we could just each introduce ourselves, each member of the board, so that the new members can meet us and we can meet them. And since we can't go around the table and everybody is arranged differently on their own screen than than the screen I'm looking at, I thought we could just go in the order that our names are listed on the agenda. So I'm Tom Rockland. I'm the vice president of the board and chairing today's meeting in place of Carol Kirsch, who can't be here. I've been on the board, this is my third year. I am retired from the University of Iowa, where I had a whole lot of different jobs, last one as vice president of student life. And retirement is my favorite stage of life so far. So let's see, I think Derek, you would be next.
Yeah, sure. Derek Jock, I currently work in ServiceNow. It's an IT cloud product. That's what I do career-wise. But my reason for being involved with the library is just based on my personal history. I'm a teen parent and library was an invaluable resource in especially those younger years of parenting. And I just really strongly feel that not only do I feel obliged to give back in that way, but also, you know, tear down barriers and basically make make the library as accessible as possible to people that need it the most.
Thank you, Derek. I don't see Kelly here. So we can move on to Daniel.
I'm Dan Karenin. I work for a car insurance you may have heard of. I'm 62 and Tom, you're apparently a few years ahead of me because I'm not yet retired, but I can smell it.
Does it smell good?
It does, but it's a little frightening because my entire life has gone into my work. Probably 90% of my social life in my work. So I'm trying to figure out what am I going to do with the rest of my life with, you know, act two. So one thing is I want to get involved in the library. I want to learn how it operates and I want to bring whatever I can to help it operate better.
Thank you and welcome. Noah.
Hi, my name is Noah Kim. I'm new to the board and new to this side of library service. But I spent about 10 years in libraries as a paraprofessional and then went to the School of Information at the University of Michigan and did some work in academic libraries around service design and kind of new technology and then switched over to health informatics. And right now I'm a UX researcher and I do information design in in the healthcare field. But so I work from home. I moved to Iowa City just during the pandemic. So I'm fairly new to Iowa City, but really, really excited to stay in touch with kind of the pulse and the purpose of of libraries and public libraries in particular have always been kind of where my heart is. So I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, Noah, and welcome. Robin.
Hi, I'm Robin Petzold and I work at U, my direct global health for the College of Medicine. And I've been on the board, I'm not sure how many years. I know it's more than 10, but I'd say it's probably probably about 13. So it's been a while.
Thank you, Robin. Hannah.
Of course, my dog started barking at me as I unmuted myself. I'm Hannah Schultz. There's construction happening in my house, so I have two dogs locked in this room with me. So I hope that's not too annoying. I'm starting my third year on the board along with Tom and Derek. We all joined together. And my day job is working for Feeding America's National Office. That's about it.
Thanks, Hannah. And Dan.
I'm Dan Stevenson. This is new to the board as well, along with Dan and Noah. In my professional life, I teach eighth grade US history in West Liberty, where I've taught for about 13 years now. I've been involved in the union and helped start and run a citizenship program there as well. I have been a long time, I've considered the library a long time friend since I first moved to Iowa City 20 years ago this fall. And I really value libraries. Our family lived in West Branch for a period. I served on the library board there. And so I'm really excited to get back into the library board business and and support the Iowa City Public Library.
Well, welcome, Dan. And thank you to all the new members for volunteering to help us. The next item on the agenda is public discussion. Is there any public discussion tonight? Okay. And I should just reveal that long ago when I was teaching, somebody observed me and told me that my wait times were too short after I asked for input. So they have now become sometimes painfully long. I'll try to manage that appropriately. Moving on, we have the annual board report. And in your packet, you have the FY '20 included. That's last year's report. And then FY '21's draft, which is for our input and approval. Ellsworth, would you like to say a word or two about the process here?
Sure. This process is a little clunky. We've tried it even a couple different ways since I've been here. But as we discussed last month, maybe in a coming month, we can go back and do a little postmortem with it. What I put together today is like Tom said, last year's report as an example, in case there were questions about what the final product looked like. And then this year's draft. I, we had talked very briefly at the last meeting and decided that we wanted to have two steps between the two. One was to give time for board, board comment and board suggestions being emailed to me. The second step would be then to incorporate those and other pieces that might be lingering into a more straightforward, more streamlined draft, which is in the packet tonight. So that's the draft. That's the document that has the watermark draft across it. So what we can see on this is the sort of boilerplate language that the introduction that starts all of these going back through many years. And then the the work through the accomplishments of fiscal year '21. And thank you to anyone who sent in comments and suggestions for this. So I pulled out the accomplishments that either seemed to mirror some of the goals we had put in place, or really rose to the top of what I thought took staff time, energy resources, stood out to me as accomplishments during the year. That includes sort of a rolling count of the policies that we review. That part, we can absolutely edit and change if the board would like. If the board is satisfied with that, it can stand on its own. There is not a set number of goals or accomplishments for this. It's sort of, there's a lot of wiggle room depending on how you feel. If there are things on that list that the board does not feel rise to this level, we can strike them. And then looking at the goal section, I overloaded this section very intentionally, thinking about while the incoming trustees were not here, while we did this work, they are now part of the board. And I thought might be nice for them to have some input into what we put forward as a legacy document moving forward and and setting those goals. So I included 14 goals. That would be a pretty high level. It's possible to leave it like that. Like I said, there's no rules for that. But if there is going to be conversation around this tonight, a really practical place to put that would be, what on that list of 14 does it feel like maybe should should not be maintained? That might not feel like it's that level of goal? Or maybe we feel like it's important, but maybe it's a little more operational, less aspirational, things like that. So I would recommend that the board maybe have a conversation about if any of those felt less critical or less important to put out there as goals, that we could take a few off. But if if they all feel good and people want to roll with the 14, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be against any rules to leave them there either. So that's what I was thinking. Again, as a reminder, this document does not do right now. We do it pretty early. And I think we do it that way so that it's done and we don't have a pressure point around it. If this is not an organic conversation and we feel like it becomes a stumbling block, we can, I could always pull this document back and bring it back again with those goals reduced based on the leadership team's input. So it's sort of at your disposal. I just didn't, I wanted to make sure we let those new voices contribute to what goes as a steering document for the year.
Tom, may I ask that we go through these sequentially? So we could talk about each one and have a system to it?
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Because I have a few questions. That's all. Go ahead.
Yeah. So why don't we start with the the first goal and see if there are any comments or questions about goal one? Thank you for that suggestion, Robin.
I don't want stepping on his toes. Someone's go first. But I appreciate goal one, but I'm not sure if the board will continue to collect or continue to analyze. I mean, I'm not sure that we're the ones who collect the data. How did you envision that, Ellsworth?
I believe that language was supplied by a board member, but I don't think that they would disagree with that that page.
Great. Other thoughts about that? I think that's one of the challenges of this document is that it's the board's report. And so we want to keep a focus on things that the board does. But at the same time, in reality, the work gets done by the staff and some of that might represent goals that the board has in mind. But if there aren't any objections to Robin's suggestion, I think that's a easy thing.
With you saying that, can I ask your clarification? Do you see these as goals for the institution or goals for the board? Because in the past, they've been for the board, but they're for the institution, the original verb might be appropriate.
Right. So Ellsworth, you might want to comment on that.
Going back through these, I would say that there's a little variance. I think because this is sort of a standing document that's been done for many years, it goes into a report, and I think it goes into a finance document that the city reports, reports on. It is the board's annual report. So I read that mostly as a level goals. But when I looked through many past years, lots of them were focused on staff action. So I think it's it's kind of, I guess I see it as, what are the goals that rise to the top for the board? Whether those are goals that the board carries out, such as designing and completing educational program or curriculum for the board, or whether it's those higher level, like the staff.
Most of my questions will relate to that issue.
So if I may, I think from sitting in on the June meeting where there was a lot of discussion about maintaining that policy, it seemed like, you know, the board was asking administration to do that. I think if you want to focus it as a board goal, it could be to direct the administration to collect data with an eye to further board review. Maybe set a time for that.
I see a lot of nods and thumbs up for that one.
How far along are we on the data collection? Is data collection going to last forever for years and years and years? Or is it going to be a week or two or three? And then we'll have data to look at?
I think our plan was to stop gathering data and jump in, but close to end of calendar year this year.
You know, one of the concerns is the collection of data is not the goal, is the analysis of the data. That's the goal. So that's why I'm, the word collect, I'm not enthusiastic about the word collect.
Yep.
Analyze, interpret something that that, so we're going to be working with the data. Ellsworth, that isn't meant to say that I don't think it's a great goal. I think it's just the level of responsibility the board has within the goal.
Let's, Ellsworth, I see you're taking notes on that. Why don't we, what I'm thinking is if we move on and then we'll see pretty soon whether what we want to do is see these again, or whether we can clarify it tonight. So so the next one, number two, is to seek new funds or reallocate budgeted funds, expand staff learning opportunities.
Again, we don't seek the funds.
Right, right.
The the board goal might be in the interest of helping develop those staff skills. I thought if we are looking to limit the number of these, that one paired nicely with number nine, which would be creating that learning plan. Again, you know, I take your point, Robin, that that is a staff task. So is it appropriate for a board call? I don't know.
Right.
But I thought that might be, you know, that seems like seeking the funds and creating that learning plan, a board action related to that could be helping direct the focus of that or, you know, the areas of those skills. But I think that's probably most appropriately left to the director.
Or allocating funds to support the, or allocate funds to support the learning plan. Something that way, combining those two. I agree with Dan in concept. It's just how you're going to tweak that.
Yeah.
When I, actually, when I saw create a learning plan for the staff, I don't think the board has the skill set to do that. I think that's the expertise of the staff.
Right. The language for number two came from a trustee, I think, in reaction to the conversation last month about the NOBO request related to staff training. The language in number nine, that comes from me. And I, looking at it now, it will need some tweaking to to differentiate that operational part of creating the details of the plan versus the board role of the support of and and guidance on.
Right.
And I'm not sure it's reallocate funds or, you know, provide support or allocate. I wasn't sure if reallocate was appropriate as a goal.
And these could also, don't forget, we totally have the opportunity to strike.
Right.
If it feels like it's not resonating or isn't worth the kind of the rewriting, we've got lots of room to take out if we'd like.
So I'll just note that 10 is also a staff development goal. So if you were looking to combine, you might be able to do that. So this is an relatively unprocessed thought. So it might be poor. It's, it occurs to me that we could precede all of these with some statement that said something like, the board has, has asked the staff to do these things. So because the board really doesn't do very much except approve things.
We could evaluate progress on those things. I mean,
We could, we could. So so maybe, maybe rather than trying to make each one into something that is a board goal, we could just start with a preamble. I'm not sure exactly what the preamble says. So I think it's become apparent that we'll want to look at it again. So and that relieves us from having to find a final resolution for each one at this this point. We can give Ellsworth some comments and let him work with those. But let's continue through the list and and give our best thinking to each one. So number three, that actually is something the board does.
But I'm not sure that's a goal. That's just an operation method.
I agree with that.
So I don't know that it needs to be there at all. It's just.
I see nods. Anyone think that three should remain?
I thought three and 11 were, in my business experience, planning experience, those are just do-its. They're going to happen. They're not aspirational. They're not things we're struggling to do. They're not things we hope to do. They're things that we know will happen. So they're not really goals for this fiscal year or aspirations. They're just do-its. The three and 11, because they're going to happen.
Yeah. And I think they may show up here because we're going to want to list them as accomplishments next year. But there's no need for every accomplishment to have been a goal.
Right.
I think at least one of those came from a board, from a board trustee suggestion. So we can, we can work on that.
So number four.
It's that verb again.
Yeah.
The board doesn't measure. We could provide resources or allocate resources, but we don't measure.
Yep.
And we can request updates on, we can, I mean, I, and I kind of think of these as the board's goals for the library, right?
Yeah, right.
And and on that, and I'm sorry to keep talking about all of these, but on that, I wondered if number four and number six could be related under a equity sort of label that both of those deal with, both what's available in the library, related to BIPOC communities, as well as including community outreach on those topics. So I thought those two could be connected as well.
I think, yeah, we could, we could connect those. I think, I don't see a lot of, I see overlapping of intent. But the, but when I'm looking at number four, that's more just, let's, let's take stock. And then for number six, it's let's take action on what we learned.
True.
Well, again, we don't create the programming infrastructure. That's staff.
But I guess this would be the board saying, we have to do that.
Right. I mean, there's just tweaking, like the concept, I agree with the concept. It's just the role of the board versus expertise of the staff that I struggle with.
Right. Right. I just want to say that number four in particular, I think is a really important and difficult one. So I definitely want it to stay there and and be noticeable in in whatever form it ends up in.
What if we critiqued, what if we use the word critiqued or analyzed or rather than measure? So it shows that we have a responsibility, however, we're not the data collectors.
Yeah, I think, Ellsworth, you've sort of gotten the message, right, on the trying to be clear one way or another about what the board is going to do here. I think those are good ways, or maybe other good ways to to clarify that.
I think that makes so much sense. Has anybody been here on the board at a point when the board wrote this report?
We generally worked at this process where there's a draft and we just, we give feedback. And then there's opportunity to add goals, like you solicited the goals. So this is historically been the process, still is the only process. You know, and I think it's just like when you're reviewing bylaws or something, sometimes you catch something you did the year before where you think, what were we thinking with that language? Like, you know, is it the best we could do? Do we need to tweak it? But I think your process is really good, is one trustee just giving feedback. It's just, we need to do this, you know, we just need to critique. And I'm always concerned about trustees' roles versus staff expertise and staff roles and that we, we don't, that we try to set some definition of what each of us are responsible for.
I agree. Yeah. I'm very comfortable working with what's been shared so far, whether or not, what we're supposed to go through the rest of them or not. I feel like there's there's good guidance here. I like the idea of sort of potentially having a preamble to it, raising that level of not doing the work, but overseeing and providing those checks and balances. I think we could come back with something strong.
So maybe I should just ask, are there others that people think can be removed or any missing ones? And then at our next meeting, we can discuss languages as necessary?
Could someone, could, Ellsworth, just take a look at number 14 at the end? Because it looks like the board's goal is discussing with staff and board. It seems a bit circular there in thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, it's not the concept of the goal. It's just like the, for the board's goal to be just discussed with staff and board, it's, it's just a language tweaking that's needed.
Yeah, I agree. We can clarify that.
Yep. Ellsworth, do you have what you need to iterate?
I think so. I think so. And if I, if I need specifics, I'll reach out and get a little more.
Great. Any other thoughts on this?
I hear in your voice, and maybe I'm wrong, a little bit concerned that you might want more board input before you bring it back in. Do you, is there something you want us to supply you to make this a little easier? I just hear a little bit hesitation, like, you know, you're saying, some things are given to you by board members and the board members are being kind of fussy about it. Is there something we can do to help you with this process?
No, I appreciate you asking that. I, it was a, this is a tricky one for me. I remember it being tricky last year, too. It's that difference. They're not, they're my goals, but they're not my goals.
Right, right.
It's hard to, I think, when you, when I hear you say these things, it's so clear. And then I think, oh, this should be easy to go back and fix it. And and I think I, I think I can pull the pieces together.
Okay.
The other good thing is, as annoying as it might be to roll it from month to month, there's not a hard deadline. We've got, we've got quite a bit of time. So I think there's, I think we will, we'll be able to come back and and have a fresh look next time.
Great.
Of course, my dog.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Just to look up at the top of this document, the, it's determined as determining the goals and objectives of the library, so that it is the board determining the library's goal, not exactly our goals for ourselves.
I'm sorry, could you repeat? I didn't, I think it was the dog barking that, whoever had a dog barking.
All right. That's me. I've got a letter out. I'm sorry.
We all understand. We all looked at each other.
I will share, we had a, once at the West Branch Library Board, we had a kitten in the middle of the meeting. Much more pleasant interruption. I would just look back at the top of this section on page seven, where it discusses the board's specific list of legal responsibilities. And what it says there is determining the goals and objectives of the library. So I see this, you know, where we do have staff action. Again, it's the board determining that those are the goals for staff, not just for ourselves and our own board meetings.
Yeah. Good point.
I also wonder if this should be something that's, that's either revisited or thought about during the director evaluation, as a continuation of the directive and goal seven for the whole agency.
Yeah, that's a good point, too. Other thoughts on the annual report? Okay, we'll revisit that at our next meeting. The next item on the agenda is the NOBO budget. This is information that we requested at the last board meeting. And again, maybe I'll turn to you, Ellsworth, just for a comment on this item.
At the last board meeting, you saw the first, first draft of the NOBO request that I was making to the board. Again, just a super quick overview, the NOBO budget is made up mostly of gift funds that come in through the front foundation, also some state money allocated through that. It's a totally board-controlled fund. At the beginning of each year, the director, along with input from leadership team and staff, make a request, you know, asking for what, what needs to come out of that, including some standing things, like some staff salary monies and other commitments. And then another side of it, which is sort of strategic initiatives or things that we need that may not have fit easily into the operational budget. At the last meeting, there was, there was just one person sort of said, you know, I'd be interested in seeing how those requests had varied or information about requests from the past years. So I jumped into that kind of thinking, I'm not really sure what story we're going to tell here, but I'm going to do some investigating. And we went back through the past seven years, which is what, what was most what was most wholly available without having to put a lot of staff hours into pulling through GL lines. So I looked at those requests. And I read through, you know, obviously the narratives and the, the other, the, the values parts of those. And just kind of put together a report of my observations, a little bit about what, what new have been used for. Some about the difference of that and the operating budget, just sort of the, the value of it. But then tried to break down into the biggest categories, what those requests were over the past seven years. So kind of thinking about, we have this pool of resource. How has it been used historically? And like I said, the report, one of the things that stuck out to me the most was just the variance in requested amount. And, and then beyond that, sort of, there is kind of a lot of similarity in in some of the categorical lines, which makes sense because we could watch that personnel line, you know, trend up as those wages and benefits get more expensive. Some of them are very static, except for certain sort of easy to tell why diversions. And then some are, are just, you know, you really had to look it up to see what was going on that year to see why the expenses were so high. So what I walked out of thinking was just, this is a, you know, this is a really valuable tool that library has. We're really fortunate to have it. It's used sort of a variety of ways. I think we also here can see, we get to see the end of somebody who'd been here a really long time's tenure, somebody who, who maybe had a different budget approach. And then you see a new person come in. Obviously, there's a conservative swing here on the end. But I think that will, will lift up as we move forward and we take on different capital projects, other big things like that. So I'm, I'm hoping that, that there was at least some relevant information in there. We can do a little bit deeper dive if we need to. Another takeaway from this experience was going into the granulars of the, these budget lines will be a relatively tedious data retrieval process. Unlike the traditional operating budget where we can pretty much plug in a GL line and tell our financial software to run a report. This one will be a little bit more hand processing of putting in the month to month and the, the specific lines that we need based on what the expenditures were. So we can absolutely go back and dig. I think we need to think about what, what we're looking for if we're going to do that. But I, I, I kind of enjoyed looking back through the past requests and I had done that right, right before I got here. And sort of in my, my first year of budgeting. But it, it really does kind of tell a different part of the library's story. And speaks really directly to some of the more in the moment initiatives. And because our council sort of sets goals and initiatives at a different timeline than the department does, that was another really clear part, was a lot of this, these resources go toward supporting these city initiatives, being able to be nimble and agile in doing that. Fortunately, as a public library in this community, our values tend to line up with city council and city administration on many, many items. So I, I think it's, again, it's just such a true gift to be able to take on new and different things without having to go in and continually reshuffle your operational budget. But I'd be more than happy to, to answer more questions. I know there was a lot of, a lot of stuff on that second graph that might have been overwhelming, but I'm happy to talk.
Are there questions for Elsworth on the report? Thank you, Elsworth. Really good information and I could not agree more that it's a great reminder of the value of the NOBO fund and the generosity of the community in supporting the library.
And can I say with the, and the hard work of the development staff and the friends that they have continued to do this, that money's available because of their work?
Yep.
I would note that the memo is dated next year instead of this year. July 22nd, 2022. I don't think you're going to wait until next year to file that memo.
I like to be ahead of the game a little bit.
Now that I note the date on the memo, I'm trying to see if it says anything about where the market will be. Nothing. So the next item on the agenda is the FY22 NOBO budget. And this is a request that we need to act on. So are there questions or comments on the budget request? Elsworth, anything you want to say? Yeah.
I do want to point one thing out. I remember my, my first budget cycle here, when we were talking about NOBO. Robin asked during the meeting, how do you budget, make a budget with more money? You're going to spend more money than coming into it. And I, you know, my first year working with NOBO, I actually think I probably just had a deer in my life. But to go back to that now, since I've been here, the budgets have been, have been pretty aligned with what's coming in. But as you can see in the data presented earlier, those state monies tend to be going down a little bit. We don't, we don't know the future of that. And at the time of the NOBO request being made, we do not have a balance for what's in this general pot. That pot is filled by the rollover of things that are underspent, or if we were, say, to get a bigger allocation of direct state as we expected. So there is, there is sort of a, there's already a pool before we count the money that, that we're putting in now. Last month, I gave a NOBO budget that was, I think, exactly balanced to what we anticipated coming in. But in, during this month, I did get a, a committee request that I thought really made sense to include, which raised the total value of the NOBO request by $13,000. So we are now over what, what I'm saying is, is going to be allocated this year. That is, despite not having the exact balance, that will not be a problem. That we have lots more than that 13,000 in, in the budget or in that pool. But I wanted to point it out and also point out then that the number is different that I'm asking for approval on. The specific item that was added was new 125th anniversary themed library cards. Those will probably last quite a while. It's a, it, we have to buy them anyway. But because they were themed 125th, thought it made sense to, to put them here and that's, but that's the only change from last month when you saw this.
Comments? Hearing no comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the NOBO budget request.
So moved.
And a second.
All second, Hannah.
Moved by Derek, seconded by Hannah. And for new members on Zoom, we've been voting sort of both by signaling by hand and, and speaking, so sort of redundantly. So is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye, hold a thumbs up or do something else cool. Appears to be approved unanimously. Are there any nays? Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is an item for discussion related to the federal funds that the city will be administering. And again, Elsworth, if you would introduce this a little bit, that would be helpful.
Sure. So we were asked to present this to all boards and commissions to have, to let sort of our invested stakeholders have choose to, if they'd like to have sort of a voice of this thing. So this is, this outlines, like Tom just said, the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the, have been allocated to the city of Iowa City. So that's $18.3 million. Half was received in May. The, the rest will be received in the future. And they, and we have a, a date they have to be spent by. So the city is trying to get lots of input as to where we, where this money should be applied. It won't be surprising to anyone, but there, there are a lot of, of valuable places that could use this funding. And then they put out a, a link to a survey and also an email that comms can email too. So I spoke to some other department heads just about sort of how are you approaching this with boards and commissions, because it's going to be hard to, to, to do this process sort of in real time, in a, especially I think in a virtual meeting. But if you read through the packet, you'll see it, they gave a pretty good succinct overview of what the recovery funds are intended to do, what they are not intended to do, et cetera. So I'm assuming everybody has a decent handle on that. And the survey is quite light. If you looked at that, it's really just putting a, a number of things, ranking things in a, in order. And then if you have anything else specific to say. So really the first question is, does the board want to try to, to answer this as a, as a unit? And if we do, then one of the comments that would be shared in number four is this was done on behalf of the ICPL Library Board, just to let them know that that's the voice behind this particular entry. Alternately, members could, trustees could fill this out individually and either choose to do it as a Iowa City resident or as a member of the Iowa City Public Library Board. So there's a few different ways forward. We do have until the 15th of August, I believe, and I think that was the date, the, the first round was going to be considered. So if it, if it feels like something people would rather take different time with and send me individual rankings, I could do the math and, and put them in a final order. It's kind of up to the group. What makes the most sense? There are, there are, are many that speak, you know, directly to, to the work that that we do. And I think that the values that we collectively hold. So does anybody have a preference? We could, we could try doing a, putting them in order. Or we could, I could get individual input. What makes the most sense?
Thoughts? I'm leaning more towards the, having us, having everyone fill this out individually as, as members of the board. Unless there's any opposition to that. Hey, the reason I'm, I'm thinking that is just from a effort standpoint. Honestly, I, I feel like if we can all go out there, take the survey, give them their information, that'll get them the response quickly. So we don't need it to languish or anything like that.
Elsworth, is there a louder voice if it's done as a group?
We were not told that it would hold additional value. I think that what they'd want to know is that a single survey entry was representing nine community members. So my guess is that, and this is a guess, that they would take that, and however they were counting the rankings, each one of those rankings would get nine votes behind it. So it would be as if nine individuals had voted for the one that the group put first.
And I believe I'm not eligible to participate in this.
Oh, right. That's the non-Iowa City representative, right?
I'm not in, 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 within Incorporated Iowa City. I'm in the rural Iowa City.
Right.
If we do this individually though, I will double check, Robin, because you are on a board and commission. So I don't know if that.
Whatever you direct, right? Whatever you direct. At this point, I just interpret it as I'm not, these are city, by the city funds, and I'm not eligible. And yeah, I just need to acknowledge that.
I, I will just say that as a matter of process, having a group this size rank 10 things, I would allocate a morning for that. So is there general support for each of us filling it out? And, and noting if we choose to in number four, that we're members of the Iowa City Public Library Board? Looks like yes, 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 yes. Okay, let's do that.
I'm curious. I've already done the survey, but I'm curious. It also says ideas can be sent by email. So is there an opportunity for the board to submit ideas in the survey of how to use the funds? And Elsworth, do you have thoughts of how the library may use some of those ones?
Yes, I mean, I, I have thoughts of how the library could apply them. The library is also eligible for sort of smaller pockets, significantly smaller pockets of really funding that come directly for, for those really cut and dry services that we provide. With this particular ranking, I think I mean, it, it kind of depends how you're approaching it. Replacing lost government revenue would be the easiest way to take those resources and turn them into library service. But the library would also be able to better serve the community if we had better broadband access and affordability, as an example. So it's sort of like, do, do we want to be the direct vehicle or is it the stepping stones we could take if all these other supports were in place? But I would say that the lost government, government revenue broadband and nonprofit and social service agencies would speak the most directly to the work that we do and the, the partners that we partner with, the work that they're doing. But certainly all of them, putting all of that money toward any of these points would, would be a great thing for the community. I mean, we, any of that will make, make it a better place to be.
Yeah. Elsworth, I would also think that the first one, the economic disparities, one would be a place where the library has a, a role.
I agree.
Important role. Okay. That takes us to item four on the agenda, which are staff reports. So first staff report comes from the director. So Elsworth, thank you for the report you've published. And any, anything to add or draw our attention to?
I don't think I have any additions this time. This stands as it is, but I'm happy to answer questions or clarify cases. Robin?
Elsworth, I'm sorry, with the board dinner, the people who left the board a year ago were not able to have a dinner because of COVID-19 issues. I just wonder when you listed the people, if they should have been included because they weren't allowed to be celebrated.
Your point.
My point.
I wish I could remember names.
Last year.
I, I said, I don't know if we do, I don't, I can't remember names, but we should have, because we have new people come in each year. So probably people go on each year. No, Patty's saying no.
Every other.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be inclusive. I, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think I tried to look that up as well, feeling like we were leaving somebody out.
Never mind. No good deed goes unpledged, I'm sure.
I didn't, I didn't, I felt odd to include this detail in the document, but the, the meals of incoming trustees are covered. Also outgoing, Patty, or just incoming, also outgoing. So the, the board, the trustees who are, who have, are not new and are not going anywhere, and the leadership team, we, we fund our own and the, the rest of the group. So to celebrate.
The only thing people pay individually for is alcohol. And spouses or partners? Are spouses or partners included this year?
Didn't even think about that.
Because in the past they were, but that, the people came in, had to pay for spouses or partners. But I didn't know what your intention was this year, but just that people can mark their calendars.
I would say as tradition, spouses and partners more than welcome, but would be paid for by the, the individual. I guess the other question I would have is, just to make sure folks read the in-person meetings section and and, and are comfortable thinking about the transition to the boardroom. We do have time. I don't know about availability, but we have time to think about meeting room. A, if people are concerned about the size of the boardroom. But I would, I would need to hear that now from the group.
Anyone?
Do the new people know where the boardroom is?
Yeah, we had orientation.
Orientation there, so.
Well, Ellsworth, what I wanted to ask about whatever room we use is we've given the option to people in the past that if you cannot attend and contact the board in advance, you could attend virtually for a limited number of sessions. Is that still going to be an option? Because now that meetings are being recorded, there seems to be a potential barrier. That are we still allowed to attend virtually as needed?
I have not heard that that's being, that that's no longer an option. So I think we can, we can assume it's all right. We also have the benefit of having a strong IT unit here and the building with integrated technology. I guess Brent could better answer that. I believe it, it would be possible to still get a good audio recording and probably a serviceable video, whether we had people zooming in or not. Is that right, Brett?
Well, the current plan is to actually record using Zoom. So we're always going to have, we thought we'd get a better audio recording that way. And the video, I mean, is not going to be that compelling anyway. It's going to be, so, you know, it's a bunch of people sitting in the room. So we thought we would, and that would also, you know, if somebody did zoom in from remotely, we'd be able to capture that video, that audio pretty well.
Thank you.
Great. Great idea. Any other questions or comments on Ellsworth's report for this month?
I, I hesitate to even open this can of worms, but as COVID positivity numbers are going up, we are over the two and a half percent in Johnson County now. Um, I'm wondering if we need to revisit our phasing because one of the, we're doing less tests now, which is one of the reasons that the positivity rates are going up. So I'm wondering if we should have another conversation with Susan Veleter or someone else at Johnson County Public Health to see if our phasing still makes sense.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that the percentage positive rate isn't reflective of the overall positivity rate. So I think, yeah, I would want, if we could add to maybe next month's agenda, having someone from JC PH come, that would be great. Or at least get some input from them.
We can do both of them. I agree. I think there is a lot of concern about variants and the changes in how things are being reported. I think we got very comfortable with the daily reporting. When that was sort of pulled back, it, it felt harder to respond. So that's a great idea. I'll reach out to Susan and, and inquire about, could you come and give a brief, a brief statement?
I just thought about Hannah's remark. We were, we were contacted about the changing of the mask issue being a little bit earlier than we originally planned, partially because of safety issues and working conditions for the staff. And I'm wondering, are we now at a situation where the work environment is healthier and less intimidating for the staff?
I would say absolutely. It was like, it was like a light switch. And I, I can't speak for the desk staff who are, are out of the desks, you know, for 15 or 20 hours a week. But I, the complaints that escalate to me, I haven't had any since we changed it.
Just wanted, I just think it's something we need to touch on to make sure that we had an appropriate work environment.
Yeah, I think the feedback I've gotten from staff has been very positive.
In my visits, I've, I've spoken individually to people at desks and I've heard the exact same thing is kind of a sigh of relief of, yeah, things have calmed down. Oh, thank you. Basically is why I heard. Start up baby.
Anything else on Ellsworth's report? Right, thank you. Sam has provided us with a community and access services report with good news in it. Any questions or comments for Sam on that report?
Come to us live from the, from the-
From the bookmobile.
At first I thought you were in like an industrial freezer or something. Like that's an interesting location.
I know that door anywhere.
Yeah, it's nice to have you all on the bookmobile with me. Door stats, I'm not sure.
I do think the welcome desk is a very cool idea. Looking forward to being welcomed by volunteers. Yeah, thank you. Anything else for Sam? All right. Thank you, Sam. Next up, the development office report. Patty?
I just want to say thank you very much to the new trustees who have already contributed to the Friends Foundation and grown that Nobu fund going forward. So thank you to each of you for your generous support. And this is the time of the year when I remind everyone, we would love to be able to say we have 100% support of all of our board members, the Friends Foundation board members that you appoint as well as yourselves, because you are the corporate members of the Friends. So many of you give generously every month in a recurring deduction from savings or checking account. That's lovely. Makes it easier on all of us. And you support our events, but if you wouldn't mind, if you want to give a one time, please go online and just get that done. Thank you. It'll make a difference, as you know. We're very, 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 very excited. The bookend has a soft reopening starting Monday. As I've written the last couple of reports, we will be open 10:30 to 4:30 weekdays only at this point. And we will continue with our request that people not bring in more than 10 items to donate at a time, including the lovely man that goes out to his car six or seven times with his bag and comes back with things for me, which is awesome. Our people are smart. There's a way around every rule Patty comes up with. Anyway, and we are having the downtown district's block party this weekend, Saturday. I encourage you, if you are downtown anytime between tonight and the end of October, look up at the poll banners and smile. We'll have more about what it is that you're seeing, but they celebrate the library's 125th anniversary. And we received an amazing gift from True Art and Bankers Advertising President David Bywater in that he agreed to print all of the banners for the library's anniversary because they are also celebrating the 125th anniversary.
Oh, wow.
And so he donated the cost and said, you know, why don't we add other groups and people who are celebrating milestones? So Ellsworth has spent the last several days sending emails to some 35 different local organizations and even the wrestling department is, how old is that? I forget now, Ellsworth. Anyway, marvelous, marvelous project. And we're going to have a little reception for our new friends who are just like, whoa, wow, wait a minute. You guys just did this? The library rocks. So
Cool.
Yay, for what we do. And it's just been a great project to work on with everybody. And last, I just want to say the, the foundation, new board member orientation is set for August 5th. So look for meetings to resume after that, probably September.
Okay.
That's all. I'll happily answer any questions.
Anything for Patty?
About the bookend, Patty, I appreciate all the effort that it took to get that back off the ground. And it's, it's a relief.
I understand. I truly, truly do. And I hope that in the second quarter, we'll be able to be back to weekend hours and evening hours. But for right now, we're just going to kind of baby step in things and see how it goes.
Thank you so much.
The bookend committee is the best.
Don't doubt it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is labeled miscellaneous. And I think maybe I'll grab the opportunity to invite Kelly had an announcement she wanted to make. Maybe we can just slip it in here.
Hello, everybody. I was just wanting to make sure that everybody received the email to respond to a few questions from our PR and marketing team for the fall window. So if you have received that, that's wonderful. And if you could get that back to us by the date I asked in the email, we would certainly appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you for the reminder, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next up is the president's report. The president is not in attendance, but she did actually send me a report, which maybe if you'll indulge me, I'll just read to you. It's just a half a page. And so I'm not, the personal pronouns here refer to Carol, not me. So missing the first meeting of the new fiscal year probably isn't the most auspicious way to begin my tenure as board president. Nonetheless, I'm looking forward to serving, although with a bit of trepidation. I will be counting on Kelly as the resident Roberts Rules of Order expert to keep me on track in procedural matters. I had the pleasure of meeting our newest board members in person at the new member orientation session offered by Kelly and Ellsworth on July 13th in the boardroom. They each bring unique backgrounds to the library and I welcome them to the board. This session was a good reminder to me to refer to my own copy of the trustee manual more often, an easy way to get in a bit of unofficial continuing education. I plan to add the document Best Practices for Board Member Contact with Employees issued by the city to this manual. And she had that emailed to all of us. Recently, I was in the library to pick up some holds and was excited to experience the energy of young children in the building again. With a bit of luck and good public health practices, hopefully the summer reading program can return to the building in 2022. Patty's report in this packet introduced me to Society 6, something I had never heard of before. I will definitely be exploring this site in the future as a way to support the library. ICPL is very fortunate to have Mara as a part of the ICPL staff submitted by Carol Kirsch. So that is the president's report and I will not invite questions on the report. So next on the agenda, announcements from members. Are there any announcements from members? And number seven on the agenda, committee reports. And we've got the memo of understanding between the ICPL and the ICPL Friends Foundation. This is labeled board action required, but I have since been informed that there is no board action required here. So the memo is included for our information. Are there any questions about the memo? This, this is just the annual commitment from the foundation to the funding that they're going to provide to the library. Okay. Communications, don't know that there were any included this month. So for new board members, this is normally where communications from the public would be listed. And, yeah. So we've reached the consent agenda, which has two items, approval of the minutes of our previous meeting and approval of disbursements for the month of June. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Derek. Seconded by?
I will second.
Thank you, but was that Dan?
Dan Karenin.
Yeah, yeah, I guess we're going to have to do that, aren't we? So it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda. All in favor, please signify. Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. And the next item is to set the agenda for the August meeting, which will include, sorry, I can't get there. A strategic planning update, three departmental reports, a review of the fourth quarter statistics and financials and one policy review. I think we've added to that. We want to talk about public health. Was there another item that we wanted? Well, we'll be back to the annual report. Turning the annual report. Is there anything else that we need to think about for the next agenda? That being the case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oops, sorry, Ellsworth.
Sorry, I failed to mention one thing. I just wanted to say in case anybody has questions for the block party on Saturday. The library will close as usual at 6:00 PM, but we will be staffing the doors with members of the leadership team from 4:30 to 9:00. So that interim period between closure and 9:00, we will have the restrooms, water bottle filling stations, air conditioning, you know, that access available. But we'll, we'll be staffing the doors to avoid having folks bringing alcohol into the building. So just in case anybody has questions about what is the library doing because of COVID precautions, I'm still not doing in-person programs. We're not offering any programming, but we are trying to keep the amenities available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do I have a motion to adjourn? New members, this is your chance to shine. Get us out of here.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Derek. All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody, and thank you for the good meeting.